City Council meeting to order of February 5th. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Here.
Councilmember Denver.
Here.
And Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
Who do we have for the invocation this evening?
That would be Pastor Jeff Johnson, Calvary Hills Church. Who's not here.[32.54][32.54](Laughter).
Councilman Denver, would you please say a little prayer for us, please?
Dear Lord, we ask your blessings on this council meeting tonight. Let the kinds of things that you want us to do be accomplished tonight. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, sir. And since you did that, Mr. Furman, would you please lead us in the prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. I have a report out of closed session. The city council met in closed session this evening from 6:01 to 6:55 PM pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, public employee appointment, city manager. The city manager search committee recommended to the full council to retain Mr. Rob Johnson in the role of interim city manager for the foreseeable future. The council is very pleased with Mr. Johnson's performance today, and particularly in the areas of improved staff morale, issues of transparency with the public, his professional interaction with the public and with the council in general, and his management of day-to-day operations of the city. And one of the new council's goals was to change the culture at City Hall, and Rob, you are making great progress in that area. And based upon that recommendation of the search committee, by a vote of five to 5-0, the city council has approved that recommendation. Congratulations, Mr. Manager.[146.12][146.12](Applause). And would like to thank the committee for their good work in this effort, and you will stay active for the foreseeable future as well as the search committee. Okay? Thank you. Madam Clerk, what is our next item on the agenda?
I'm sorry, I was grinning.[170.73][170.73](Laughter).
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. May I interrupt my own interruption? I have to do something before we have our guests present. You know, I'm the youngest guy on the council, and so one of the things that I do is I respect my elders, you see? And so I would like to wish Councilmember Denver a very happy birthday today.[191.84][191.84](Laughter). Here is your -- a Cookie Monster cupcake, and not to be outdone, Councilmember August, whose birthday is this Thursday. Here's your happy birthday.[206.12][206.12](Applause). Take it away, Madam Clerk.
What about mine? I had my 50th in January.
Well, you stop getting those things after a while. We stop counting.
Your Honor, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by RCTC on the I-215
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Eliza Chivaria, and I'm the Community Relations Manager for the Riverside County Transportation Commission. I'm very pleased to be here tonight. This is an exciting time for transportation, for Riverside County Transportation Commission, and for this area of Menifee and the surrounding cities. Tonight I'm going to discuss the construction that's going to be occurring on the I-215. We call it the central project. Last year, about this time, we completed, or last year later in the summertime, we completed the I-215 South, which was Scott Road to Myrieta Hot Springs, and we're continuing going north from Scott Road to Nuevo Road. Here's just a little bit of the different projects that we have going on, that we've completed, under construction, that are coming soon to this area. And like I said, it's an exciting time. This is quite a bit of work that we've completed and that we do have under construction. This is an overview of what we are going to be building. Like I said, that the widening is going to occur from Scott Road to Nuevo Road. We have begun preliminary work on that project, putting out signs. I don't know if any of you have passed by, but we do have some CMS signs and some other road signs on there. Tonight, actually, we're going to be placing some K-Rail, beginning in this Menifee area, so you'll see a change by tomorrow, tomorrow's commute. We will be adding a lane, one lane in both directions that will, basically, when we're completed, we'll have three lanes in each direction, this full leg of the I-215 from the I-15 Y-split all the way up into Moreno Valley where it meets with the 60. Here I have some investment dollars on the construction portion of it, and that little number down at the bottom is just an estimate that we use to indicate how many jobs that this project generates. And what are the benefits to Menifee? I know it's going to be painful as we go through this construction for the commuters, for the residents in the area, and we do ask for your patience. You know, we -- so I was driving today, actually, back and forth from the Paris area to Riverside a couple times. There's a lot under construction, and we want to make sure that the commuters are aware that they don't suffer from what we call construction fatigue, but there is a lot going on. Economic boost, we have contractors in the area, people that are filling up their gas tanks, eating at the places around Menifee, and that's a good thing for this economy. Also have reduced congestion, greater time savings to the commuters, and noise reduction. There will be a sound wall in this area, and I will talk a little bit more about that, but a mile-long sound wall in the Menifee area.
Through the Sun City portion of the 215 project?
From McCall to McLaughlin.
Okay, thank you.
Here's the time schedule for the construction. There's going to be a lot going on in 2013. I'll just kind of update you. There's, this whole project is a 12.5-mile-long project. Nine miles of it, which is basically in this Menifee area, going, heading towards Paris, is, I'm going to say, the less complicated part of the project, as we basically are going to be infilling the center median part for the lane. As we get into Paris, there's a lot going on. There's some older bridges there. Bridges take a lot longer to construct, so that we're actually going to be having, doing work in the Paris area as well as in the Menifee area concurrently. But the work that will be beginning right off the bat, it will be the sound wall from McCall to McLaughlin. We will be beginning on the north end, working south. Also begin the widening, which I mentioned was in the center median part from Scott Road to McCall. This is all work that will be occurring this year. And then the widening of the bridges of Salt Creek, Romeland Channel, Ethan Act, and the San Jacinto River. In 2014, we'll be looking at widening McCall Boulevard, from McCall Boulevard to, north to the 74, and then completing the bridge work. And then in 2015, we're going to be, actually, the ramps will be completed in the Paris area, and then we'll be looking at new lanes to open up, and then finish up with the landscaping. We do have a comprehensive public outreach program that we put into place for the South project, also for the 74-215 interchange that we wrapped up last year, and we're following that same model with, and then also to expanding as our emerging technologies occur with social media and other types of outreach tools that come our way. Here's an example of construction alert. We did issue our first construction alert last week, and I'd like to encourage the audience and any of you that didn't receive one, that would like to receive one, you can go to our website, and I'll have that up in a few minutes here. Just put in a contact information, and we will add you to that list. We do use other social media, like Twitter, and we do have these contact cards that we developed, that has all that contact information on there, and then also a safety message on the back. And we do translate in Spanish. That is the one language that we have to deal with. Fortunately, it's just the one. But we do, you know, like to reach as much public as we can. I mentioned that safety is our top priority. We will have the lanes reduced to 55 miles an hour speed limit. Look for those signs. It will take us a period of time to get the signs up there, but they will be changing, so just note that. We want to make sure and also remind the commuters that the lanes will be a little bit narrower, and we will have additional freeway service patrol. And here's our message on staying connected. We do have a website dedicated to this project. We have an info line for those that want to call and leave a message, and we do get back within, by the next business day. I mentioned about Twitter. And then also, just wanted to do a little plug for the IE-511 program. It's a program that's run by RCTC. It gives you real-time traffic. We're trying to push the public to, that's where you go to get your traffic and transit information. It's a nationwide program, and we've had it in effect for, I believe it's about four years now, and that's where you can actually go to get updated information on the construction projects as well. And that continues, that completes my report, and I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much for an informative presentation. Are there any questions from council at this juncture? I have two. One is, is there any, will there be any impact to this project as it relates to the litigation of the EIR for the Paris Valley Line for the rail? Is there any, is it close enough? Will that disrupt, will that litigation disrupt this project at all?
No, sir.
Okay.
This project is fully funded, and the contract has been awarded, and so we're good to go. And there's no interface with that rail line on the central project.
And just, if you, I don't recall what the decision was or whether it was ever a plan. I know that the Newport Road Interchange is a different project, but when we talk about bridging on the I-215 central phase, how did the Newport Road Interchange not become part of this project? Was there a reason for it?
I'm not really sure the history of that. Generally, interchanges are done by the local jurisdiction, so I'm going to maybe say that at that time, it was the county, that was their jurisdiction. They, you know, were planning for the expansion of that. They had that in their capital plan, and we basically widened freeways. We did do the 74-215 interchange in Paris mainly because it was a project that we had to have, we had to have completed prior to building this. They couldn't do them concurrently, so.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much for coming out tonight. We appreciate it.
And then, thank you very much. And I just wanted to mention that we have these newsletters on the project and these cards out in the lobby, so if anyone would like to take one. Thank you so much for having us.[845.82][845.82](Applause).
Madam Clerk, what's next, please?
You have a presentation regarding the industrial commercial water quality inspection program.
All right. Mr. Jonathan Smith.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Jonathan Smith, Assistant Director of Public Works and Engineering. The item before you is an update presentation regarding the city's industrial commercial water quality inspection program as directed by the city's MS4 permit. This information was recently presented to the Chamber of Commerce at its most recent board meeting. The chamber has agreed to partner with us to provide this information to our local industrial commercial business owners. During that meeting, the city's stormwater consultant provided a PowerPoint presentation that outlined the upcoming industrial commercial water quality inspection program. In case any business owners in your district come to you with questions regarding the inspection program, I've assembled an edited version of the presentation to provide you with the major points of the program. What is an industrial commercial water quality inspection program? It's a set of policies and procedures that outline the minimum inspection and reporting requirements for inspecting industrial and commercial business sites within the city. Who mandates the program? It's brought down by the federal government through the Federal National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, MPDS, via the United States EPA, through the Clean Water Act. Through the state MPDS requirement, the Porter-Cologne Act. And then finally, locally, the regional MPDS requirement through the 2010 municipal separate stormwater sewer system MS4 permit. Why is the program necessary? Per state, State of California Regional Water Quality Control Board, the Santa Ana Region Order and the MPDS number. The program execution, annual inspection program will be completed by the end of June of each year. Notification of inspections will be mailed to the industrial commercial business owners. A deposit of $435 will be required to cover the cost of the inspection and report preparation. What information will be collected? For industrial sites, inspection shall include a review of the industrial facilities, material and waste handling, and storage practices. Written documentation of the pollutant control BMPs will be collected, as well as the information on the maintenance procedures. This information will be collected digitally as well for record-keeping. Commercial sites will have similar inspections, and it will include the review of the commercial facilities, material and waste handling, and storage practices, written documentation of the pollutant control, the BMP implementation and maintenance procedures. How will the inspection information be used? The information gathered during the inspections will be used to rate the industrial commercial site. These ratings will be used to determine the frequency of future inspections. A high-priority site will be inspected once a year. Medium-priority sites will be inspected every two years. Low priority, it'll just be a one-time inspection. This is not to be confused with current county Department of Environmental Health inspections, which are restaurant health inspections, hazardous permit inspections, and underground storage tank inspections. That ends my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do we have any questions from council?
There was a cost in there of $435. Could you tell me what that is for, and tell me who does the inspections on the water, please? And where they're sent?
That's correct. It's actually a deposit of $435. Working with the current consultant that we have, that's the estimate of what it's going to cost the city to go out and collect this information. It's an estimate this time. There's a lot of information that's going to be collected during this first-time inspection. Inspections in the future will be less, because it'll take.
And there's certain methodologies and technologies. Those will be the most updated, that inspects and tests the discharge and so on and so forth?
That's correct. There's another piece of this, that's the local implementation plan that we're currently working on, and that'll detail this work.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Furman.
This cost is incurred by every commercial and every industrial business in the city?
That's correct.
So I have a couple of questions related to that as well. If this is an annual inspection program, is this going to require these business owners an annual deposit of an additional $435 per year? Or is it tied to, or is there a correlation to the inspection priority where you had every two years, or every one year, or every whatever? What's the answer to that?
It will depend, the frequency will be determined by how the business, or the commercial or industrial business is classified.
So.
The risk level. And then, the next set of inspections should not take as much to complete and should cost less.
So if I'm one of the businesses that would be inspected every two years, I would put a deposit with the city of $435? And if he's a business that gets inspected one year, he has to pay $435 every year?
He may have to pay that amount. It'll be, it'll depend upon how much time it takes our consultant to do that inspection. As I mentioned, this first inspection is going to take much more time to collect this information, which will be the documentation of the business. And then the future inspections will just be visits out to the business to make sure that those items that we collected are being properly maintained.
So this is a one-time fee?
It's a fee for every inspection. This $435 fee is probably the highest that the business will receive. I apologize for the confusion. I know it is confusing, but for every inspection that we do, there will be a fee to the business. This first one, we're estimating it's $435. The next inspection, if the business is rated a risk one, they'll have a following inspection the following year. Hopefully, depending upon our estimate, the estimate that I have at this time, those inspections should be less than $435. Whatever is left out of that deposit will be returned to the business owner.
I understand. I know Mr. Denver and Mr. Furman have their lights on, but I'm going to call on the city manager first to clarify, or?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're actually taking over this program from the county at the same cost. So this is the cost the county incurred. We'll take over this cost and this program at this cost. We'll run it for the first year, and we'll make the changes necessary that we need to in case we can reduce the cost of the inspections.
Mr. Denver.
There are different kinds of businesses in our town. Some of them are side-by-side in the same building, literally under one roof, and the building could be 50 feet to 50 yards long, a lot longer than that even. Is this cost required to every single business, even though water and all that has to do with the building?
Well, that's a good comment. I will work with our consultant on businesses that are located in close proximity and see if there's a way of sharing that deposit cost. This cost is based on the amount of time that it takes our consultant to perform their work.
I really recommend that. And the second thing is, is that we have an inordinate number of home-based businesses that have pulled business licenses. Is this required of them?
That's something I'm looking into at this time. The procedures that the county was following are unclear, and I am, I'm looking into that as we go through this program.
What if we voted tonight, which is not on the agenda, to just not do this? Could we?
No. It's requirement.
Mr. Furman.
Actually, Mr. Denver, just asked the same question I was going to. Is it just in the industrial and commercial zones that this inspection was required? And he already answered that question.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually just going to qualify that comment as well. It's industrial and commercial-based businesses, which we don't have out of our homes.
You say that you now know the answer to that? Home-made businesses not involved in this?
To my knowledge, there are no home-based businesses that are industrial or commercially linked to this MS4 permit.
The question that I have, the additional question that I have, it seems to me, it's a little bit unfair to charge the same fee for the power plant, as an example, a large industrial complex such as that it is, the same fee that a smaller operator would in a commercial facility. I just, how can we, how can we say that we're going to make this fee applicable to everybody at varying sizes? Kind of along the lines of Mr. Denver asked, in terms of multiple businesses being located at one spot?
This is a deposit, not a fee.
Okay, deposit.
Yeah.
The deposit is inconsistent with the size of business, it would seem.
We've estimated based upon the scope of work for the consultant, what we're paying them hourly, and how much time it's going to take. That's how we came up with that deposit number. Now, we did not take into consideration businesses being located closely together, so there may be an opportunity for combining inspections based on the location of a number of businesses in one area.
All right. Mr. Manager, then Mr. Denver.
Thank you, sir. The depositism is based on a maximum deposit base. So as we go through this year and we go through the program, we're happy to adjust that lower if we find inconsistencies, but the bottom line is, it's a max fee now, so that we can work within that $435. And then as we go through the program, your position is well documented, and we can adjust that fee for different-sized businesses as we move forward.
And so, we're taking this over from the county. The businesses that are giving me feedback about this new fee because it was presented to the chamber, you can't believe how many phone calls I got, and arguably so. It seems to me, was the county actually doing this program? Or is this something that a business would have already built in their business plan and in their budgets, I would think? Can you speak to that at all?
I would love to have the answer to that, but I just don't. My answer is that we're required under the MS4 permit to perform these inspections, and we're required by law to do that.
Okay. And that's noted. Mr. Denver.
Who supervises the consultants on the job?
My staff.
Did I hear you say that you can monitor them, and because they're paid by the hour, you can make decisions having to do with just inspect the whole building, or if they choose to inspect every single building four times at four hours each, you could say no?
Absolutely. I've asked for them to provide me with a work program that's going to cover the businesses within our city, and we're working through that process right now.
Mr. August.
Could you tell us what agency, county, federal, or state, that the requirement, what title, what reg, or so on and so forth, this requirement comes from?
Sure. Let me go back here. The federal government, through the EPA, requires this as a result of the Clean Water Act.
That's right. Thank you.
And Mr. Edgerton?
Just want to reiterate a couple of things to make sure, got a clarification. The cost is really predicated on the time that the city will put in, in investigating the property. So regardless of the size, whatever time it takes, the probabilities are, the larger the business, maybe there is more complications and it takes more time. It is mandatory by the state, so we can't get out of it. So these costs are going to have to be paid. The council certainly has, if I'm not mistaken, the right to waive these fees, but to clarify your answer of no, it still has to be paid for, and it still has to be done.
It has to be done.
Exactly. So either the businesses are going to pay for this, or we're going to pass it on to the general fund and to the general taxpayer. And indeed, that's a choice of the council. Am I correct in what I've said so far?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Furman.
To clarify these inspections, are we just inspection for possible pollutants? Is that what the inspection's all about?
That's part of the, that's part of the, uh, process of the inspection. It's also to determine what materials are being housed at these locations and how they're being stored.
So there's a little hazmat involved in?
There's, there's proper, proper storage methods that'll be verified at each location.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Smith. I believe we have a speaker on this topic. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Mr. Ron Sullivan asked to speak after the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. I was one that, uh, wrote a comment. Um, we did check with, uh, as a member of SAPA, you know, we have to do TMDL, uh, compliance all the way up and down Salt Creek. Normally, whenever you're, uh, and you're looking at NPDES, uh, violations, you look at where it goes into the source river, and you, you gauge it at that point. And if you find that you have a problem, where it's going into the river downstream to two lakes, then you, you trace that back up to find out where the problem lies. This way, uh, it seems to me, it's kind of overreaching that we're asking everybody to come in and pay a fee just to check to see if we've got a problem. At this point, we don't know if we have a problem. Uh, and is that the responsibility of the city? Yes, it is the responsibility of the city. Uh, we had a presentation this morning from, uh, LA County at, uh, SAPA on basically the same thing. Uh, they had three different approaches as to how they were going to help pay for this. And it was not borne on the backs of industrial and commercial users. It was generally throughout, uh, however they wanted to do it. They wanted to, they wanted to assess a parcel on the tax roll, a dollar, you know? Uh, there's different ways to do it, uh, but this seems like for what we're trying to do in this particular city is to attract some businesses and not, not, uh, pile a bunch of fees on them at this point when we even know that we have a problem. There are, there are many businesses around here that have, uh, come up in the last two or three years who have had to go in and get their own NPDES permit, filed for and paid up to five to eight thousand dollars, uh, for, uh, their analysis of best management practices. Now, when you do that for something like, uh, the marketplace over here, that's one thing. When you go down to an individual flower shop over here, and they wouldn't know what a BMP is, and they're going to have to rely on somebody, and it, and to rely on a consultant at this point, you know, I don't know if that's the best, um, PR for the city at this point. You know, I would hope that you would kind of set back a little bit, uh, look at a couple of different options as to what your true, uh, responsibilities are. Uh, when we ask, uh, Regional Water Quality Control Board whether we, they thought that this was a good program, they thought it was a little overreaching.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Do we have any more speakers?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do, do we have any more speakers?
Yes.
On this topic?
Yes.
How many more?
One.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we have questions of the previous speaker from the council.
Yes.
Mr. Edgerton. Mr. Sullivan, could you, uh, return to the podium, please? Thank you.
I thought my time was up.
It's just been extended.
Okay.
No, as long as we don't get into too much conversation. Um, no, but just, just to point out that everybody here knows Mr. Sullivan is part of the Eastern Municipal Water District, has a long history, so he speaks with, um, a lot of us, a lot of knowledge, and we appreciate your service, Ron, we really do. The questions that I had asked the previous speaker and of staff earlier is that we need to be clear as a council. You, you bring up a different approach as to the fact that there may be options. It, it was, if you will recall my comments, there was an assumption that perhaps there were no options, in which the only choice you had is either you put it on the applicant, the vendor, or the general fund. However, it may not be that simple, as you point out, and I think that's our concern. If we truly have options, then that begs some other questions, but I appreciate your input.
Thank you. Mr. Denver.
Uh, Mr. Sullivan? I'll bet you thought you were going to get away. Um, did I hear you say that there are not only different options, but other cities do it a different way? Maybe along lines, did, did I hear you say that one of the choices is, is that we check the water coming into a creek, say, as it goes along, and when we find a problem, then take the time to figure out where it's coming from? Go, go from the source of the, where we find the problem back, rather than just hitting every business in town? And that, that, did I hear you say that's legal to do?
Uh, my understanding is that it's legal. If you want to go in and you want to, uh, pay a fee for everyone.
Did, did you say that others, or do, do you know if other cities do it different ways, other than what we're being proposed?
Yeah, Los Angeles County, when they were there this morning at SAPA, uh, they're going to put it on the tax rolls, and it's going to go to a vote.
Really? What happens if they vote no?
Then I guess they'll figure out how they're going to do their own monitoring, and it may have to come out of their general fund. But if you really look at the true essence of NPDES, you're, you can, you can take, uh, the large development down here, which is Audi Murphy Ranch. They've gone through their whole deal to make sure they get clean water that comes into that creek. Now, if you've got businesses that are going to open down there, they're going to get it twice. And that was one of the points made this morning at SAPA. There's a lot of people, whether it be the marketplace, or whoever, have already gone through and done everything. Five thousand, eight thousand dollars' worth of, uh, best management practices had to be filed before they even got their permits. They, they have their BMPs over here already. They already know. So why somebody has to go in now and pay another four hundred and thirty-five dollars to inspect every, uh, parking lot? It, it's parking lots. It's everything that you store. It's whatever the city wants to declare as, what am I going to inspect for? You know, is it, is it my little storage yard in, uh, the, the back? Is it my waste management container? Uh, what is it that they're going to be expected to comply with? In most cases, probably ninety-eight percent, everybody's already complying. So, you know, we took the approach that if we got lousy water going into Salt Creek down here, let's, let's take the time and trace it back up to find out where it came from, and, and then go see the culprit. This way, I guess in my manner of speaking, everybody's guilty until you're proven innocent.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Uh, Mr. Johnson, or, uh, excuse me, uh, Councilmember August, are you wanting to speak?
Will I bring Mr. Sullivan back up?
Well, okay, this will be the last question, Ron, okay?
Thank you.
Oh, um, I want to, where is the best place or the source to detect the pollutants that may be discharged? You're saying that you might allow them to go into the creek first, and then detect them, then go back up the pipeline to the source?
Sure. I mean, you have channels that, uh, you have to get a permit to drain into the river.
Okay.
And so, actually, SAPA and, and other agencies do on occasion monitor that. And that's part of what everybody upstream actually pays for, uh, to, for whether it's SAPA, or it's, uh, the Lake Els- Léjua does, and, and we also collect monies for that. So, a lot of this monitoring is, is done. The city pays a mon, uh, pays money, uh, into the NPDES, uh, requirements, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Johnson, and then we'll take our another, next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I, I don't dispute anything that we've heard tonight. However, the city, um, doesn't have a baseline for its industrial, commercial businesses. We have not performed these, uh, any of these inspections prior to, to cityhood, or between incorporation and now. And we need to get a baseline for what, for what's happening. I don't dispute that you can, uh, go to the source and then back up and find where it's coming from. However, it, um, it behooves us, as part of our MS4 permit, to make sure that, that those things are not being illegally discharged into the system. There is legal discharge and illegal discharge. The inspections allow us to, to go through the business community, and we're talking about, uh, commercial, industrial businesses. I don't believe we're talking about the retail centers. We're not talking about home-based businesses. We're talking about industrial, commercial businesses, heavy users, um, outside material, uh, stockpiles, um, and other areas that are, that may be, uh, draining into a water source, draining into the storm drain. Uh, tho- those are the, the areas that we're focusing on. Limited market. I think we have four hundred and, three hundred and fifty-nine businesses, four hundred-
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Kessin Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, this kind of caught me off guard, but I'll, I'll tell you, I, I've got to agree, uh, it seems far overreaching to me. Um, I, I would just say to the city manager, any commercial project, whether it's retail, commercial, or industrial, is going to be, uh, subject to this. Um, you know, I'm just thinking about my industrial project, Commerce Point, fifty acres, thirty-eight building, thirty-eight buildings, eight hundred thousand square feet. Um, you know, we're still, uh, building the project, still planning the project, building it. It's going to meet the, the MS4 permit. Um, it is one comprehensive project with all of the water quality, uh, up-to-date water quality components for infiltration, filtering. Uh, we've gone through permits with regional water quality, Army, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, um, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, US Fish and Wildlife. And so, we're going through this, and I cannot fathom that as we get certificative occupancy, a year later, the city's going to come in and say, to each one of the thirty-eight buildings, it's four hundred and thirty-five dollars. I mean, that, to me, doesn't make any sense. It doesn't seem equitable to me, nor does it seem, uh, equitable to me that the city is, they're talking about clean water, and they're going to come in and do inspections of what you're storing in your building? Is that redundant for fire inspection, um, and those things? So there are a number of, of concerns I have, just on an overall basis, whether I, whether I'm a developer, whether I'm a resident, on, on what is the city doing? What is Big Brother doing? Um, um, you know, the Clean Water Act, there are a number of things. Uh, another, another project, you know, trash enclosures are now required to have roofs over them. Uh, so there are a whole number of things, and I'm concerned when I hear that we're going to have a consultant. Now, granted, I'll admit, I am biased towards consultants. The meter just runs and runs. It's the never-ending cycle. So, uh, if, if that's how it's going to be, I would much rather see the council hire a staff member that is dedicated, that does this, so we know that fixed cost. Because if a consultant continues to charge, that just gets passed through the developer, and it's a never-ending, uh, cost. So, just initially, those are some thoughts that I have that are concerns. Um, and I will just say this, and granted, on Commerce Point, you know, I've been working on this project since two thousand and five, so I don't recall exactly all the fees when we were doing the due diligence. This is the first that I have ever heard, either as a development consultant, or in my term as a planning commissioner at Marietta from oh-two to oh-five, of this fee being collected. I may be wrong, but, uh, this is new to me. So, a lot of concerns with what the city's trying to do in, in bringing-
Kessin.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um, city manager, can you wrap this up, please?
Yes, thank you, sir. I just wanted to reiterate that if we don't inspect, and there is a, is a subject case, we will be fined ten thousand dollars a day for that. Um, secondarily, we're not talking about inspecting a project that has gone through its, um, proper, uh, notification sequel, made sure that they have clean water deposits. We're talking about the business that moves in after, that could have an oil spill, that could have a hazardous material in there, in that garage, that could be actually spilling into undetected waterway. We're also talking about the opportunity for people who are illegally dumping things into trash containers that could possibly leak, uh, out the back of a parking garage. That, that's what we're looking at.
Okay. And, okay. The, what I'm going to do is, if there are any additional councilmembers that would like to have any additional comments about this, we're going to do that during councilmember comments, and we're going to move on the agenda. Okay? Do we have any more speakers on this topic?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you. That brings us to approval of the meeting minutes. Uh, are there any changes to the minutes of January twenty-second?
I move approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, so ordered. Um, are there any modifications to this, uh, current agenda?
No, sir.
Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Madam Clerk, do we have public comments?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First speaker.
Chuck Ruder.
Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Council, city staff, fellow citizens, I am here, and I, I'm very pleased at what I heard at the beginning of this meeting, with Rob Johnson being the city manager. I commend you guys for that decision. Matter of fact, I mentioned it to my seatmate there. But I'm up here to talk about something else. I sent each one of you two emails, one yesterday and one today, so I don't expect you to, to comment in the right way. Um, but it's going to show you a problem over in El Rancho and Bradley, that the intersection of El Rancho and Bradley, where they have a crosswalk. And it, it's not good. I asked you to look at this thing, because you can move your mouse around, and you can see it all around that intersection. Not only that, but you know how they have the, um, the middle lane for making turns? Well, people come down Bradley Road in the right lane, and that's where they make the turn, to go into El Rancho, instead of pulling into the middle. Why? Because there's no arrow there. There's no setup right there. You've got a double line going down. That is an issue. And, uh, I look forward to it taken care of. Thank you.
Uh, we did receive that correspondence. Mr. Manager, you received that correspondence. Could you do what you need to do to look into that, please?
Yes, sir. We've, uh, sent that to Jonathan, and he's addressing it.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Al Powers and Lisa Sobek.
Good evening, Mayor Mann, councilmembers, staff, community. We are here tonight. Um, I'm Lisa Sobek, and I am representing tonight. We are with the Menifee Interfaith and Community Service Council. This is Al Powers, and I am chairman, and he is co-chairman this year. I am with the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Public Affairs Director, and he is with Saint Thomas, or Saint Vincent's, excuse me, Saint Vincent's. Um, he's going to share a few things with you, but before I turn it over to Al, I just want to thank today, um, Councilmember August for attending our interfaith council meeting. And also, Mayor Mann, you should be commended. Um, last month at our interfaith coun- council meeting, we had a guest speaker, Leslie Covey of the Senior Citizen Center here at Case Naceros. And I shared with you, um, the concerns that she had with seniors. I have already heard today that you have already moved forward and formed an advisory committee for the seniors in our area. I'm not sure if that's the name of it, but ta- looking at the, at the concerns of the seniors, I just want to thank you for that, for moving so quickly. And now, I'm going to turn the time over to Al.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor and, and all of the councilmembers, we, uh, are a relatively new organization here in town, and we do call ourselves the Menifee Interfaith Council. I'd like to read our statement and then have, uh, just a few comments. We, as an interfaith and service-minded organization of citizens in the city of Menifee, come together with our doctrinal distinctiveness as individuals and organizations to stand together as one collective multicultural spiritual voice to foster and encourage mutual understanding, peace, respect, values, compassion, service, and benevolence in our community. It is our desire to join hands in an effort to strengthen our community and families, to promote freedom of religion, and to speak together in media and pub, public meetings on social and ethical issues of our time. Any councilmember is welcome at any time at, at our, uh, meetings. Also, we, um, have Canexus, that's a part of our group, the, uh, Community Cup is a part, and the Hospice of the Valleys. And we just want you to know that we're-
is a part, and the Hospice of the Valleys. And we just want you to know that we're here to help the city in any, any way that we possibly can. So, um, we're here to help in any way. And we wanna thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next commenter, please.
Claudia Greenwood, the rate-minute taker.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, residents of, uh, Menifee. As always, I am here representing Sun City K9 Adoptions, which is our local nonprofit, no-kill animal rescue shelter located on Marietta Road. First of all, I want to thank Tom Furman for recommending SC K9 as a recipient of the generous donation from Manufactured Housing Educational Trust. This donation was very timely, as our old washing machine broke down for the third time in the past few months on the Saturday after we received the donation. Uh, we do several loads of laundry daily, as our animals receive clean rugs and blankets as needed. Therefore, Tom, this donation enabled us to purchase that much-needed machine. Thank you. Also, I'm excited to say that Sun City K9 Adoptions is now a part of the Cars for Causes, which is a vehicle donation program. You can visit our website at sck9adoptions.org, click on fundraisers, and donate your unwanted car, RV, or boat. They do not have to be in good running condition, because Cars for Causes will get it ready for sale and donate seventy percent of the net profits to Sun City K9. And lastly, please remember to enter our fundraiser golf tournament, which will take place on Saturday, February sixteenth, at the Golden Era Golf Course in San Jacinto. Deadline date to enter is February eleventh, and I have taken the liberty, without your permission, of placing flyers out in the lobby along with the, um, entry forms. So, if you would like to help us out with that fundraiser, please take a flyer and an entry form. And just wanna say thank you to all of you for your support to Sun City K9. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Rose Marie Elwright.
Hi. Honorable Mayor Scott Mann, distinguished councilpersons Greg August, Tom Furman, who participated in our event, councilperson Wally Egerton, and without John Denver's help and the new city manager help, Rob Johnson, probably wouldn't be here tonight to make this presentation. On behalf of the SCCA Board of Directors, I want to present the city of Menifee with a special recognition of its partnership and generous donation to our Christmas with the Core event held December twenty-second, two thousand and twelve. We considered it a huge success, and I would hope in some way this would lead to more community events.
Thank you.
Come on and get it. Thank you very much for that kind of donation, that, that recognition. Yeah, thank you very much. We need a partner for more things like that.
Great.
Yeah, thank you on behalf of the, the whole council and the council members that were able to attend that event. Next speaker, please.
That would be Dr. Donna D. Opoku Ajuman.
You said that very well. Excellent. Um, to the mayor and the honorable councilpersons, staff, and community, I'm here representing the Southwest Riverside County Branch of the Endaway CP, and ask, inviting you to the next event that we're very proud to present, and that is our Martin Luther King and Black History Month Breakfast Jubilee, which will be held on Monday, February the eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen, at nine o'clock AM. We are pleased that we're able to always secure the corporate room, uh, Wildomar in order to host these events. It will include, um, choir singing and praise dancers dancing, and a panel discussion on a relevant topic of, related to the Dr. Martin Luther King and the Black History Month, uh, celebration. The tickets are adults twenty dollars and youths, uh, ten, twelve and under, uh, ten dollars. And so, I will leave these brochures or invitations out in the, um, hall for you, and, uh, cordially invite your attendance. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Doctor. If you would please hand those to the city clerk.
By all means.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you so very much for the invitation. Next...
Katie Manier. Katie Manier.
Good evening, Katie Manier, City of Menifee. Last time I started speaking, and my three minutes ran out before I got to finish it. And so, I'm gonna go on with what I was reading last time. So, everybody is aware of what goes on in the city. Uh, there was recently a forum at the Wooden Nickel Ranch regarding sludge and the issue in this town. Carol Sullivan was there, witnessed documents, spoke at the next meeting, knew what went on, was well aware of it, and then recanted. Um, it's really odd that right after she recanted, she got a grant for her organization. Really timely. Maybe I need to recant what I've been talking about, and some money will come my way. The documents do exist. This is, uh, an email sent from Carol to Greg, between Carol and Greg. The documentation does exist. Just check with the city and find out why they don't have any documents. You were always requesting documents before you were elected, so you know the process. Look at the cancer and lung diseases from District Four. There's Wally and Judy, Chris Thomas's wife, Mark Miller's kidney disease, Mike Boris, who died of cancer, and Young, many families in the J-Bar Ranch. Doesn't that raise a concern regarding the effects of sludge? I guess it doesn't to you guys. I suggest that you contact Mark Matalco, Mark Miller, Janine Matalco, and Tom, and see the documentations before you make a decision on this issue. I didn't, was shocked at what has happened in this valley. You will be too, and I can't wait to leave this valley. Public forums are being held, and the public's invited. Wish more people would come out and see for themselves what has gone on. This goes on to give a report by Dr. David Lewis, who has pretty well run out of town because of his comments. We have another doctor in the area that had some concerns about it, and it seems like the Chamber of Commerce made a visit to that doctor, and I'm not really sure why they would've done that. Um, could it be there was some intimidation or some threats? Just saying. There are chemical irritants of concern and biosolids. They include endotoxins, lime, ammonia, and alkaline amines. These contaminants may cause allergic and non-allergic reactions. I'm working right now at a school, and I cannot tell you how many kids have mysterious rashes. They have no idea where they come from. The senior author and two accompanying individuals experienced coughing, burning eyes, burning throat, headaches, congestion, and difficulty in breathing within one hour of coming in the area to investigate this in Menifee. The visit occurred during a time when residents were reporting these same symptoms. High winds were blowing and sand from the treated fields. No odor was evident. As gram-negative bacteria die off after sludge application, endotoxin concentrations, a potential source of broncho-pulmonary irritation increase. That should be of concern to Wally Egerton, I think. As sludge is dry in the field, lime and other irritant chemicals become concentrated and therefore may be more irritating upon dermal contact and inhalation. And yes, my time is up. It's never enough time to talk about it.
Gee, uh, as the mayor, I'm just gonna correct, uh, the timing. The dispersment to the Menifee-Sun City Concerned Organization, the grant that was received by that organization, was from the superv- Riverside County Supervisor Marion Ashley, and that, that grant was dispersed well, well before that meeting that Ms. Manier just referenced in her public comments. Next statement, or next speaker, please.
Grant Yoderz.
Good evening, City Council, Grant Yoderz, community of Sun City. Uh, I'm just here, uh, on behalf of some of the, uh, citizens in Sun City, and as you know, the, uh, Water District is tearing up our streets in Sun City as part of the Reclamation Project. And the concern is, once they get finished, they are repaving the areas that they worked on, and, uh, the repaving is very unsatisfactory. And my question is, and maybe the city manager can address that later on, are they going to come back and put our streets back in their original condition, or is this the finished product? As you know, back in, um, spring of two thousand and eight, prior to our incorporation, then, uh, County Supervisor Jeff Stone allocated two-point-eight million dollars to resurface all of our streets in Sun City, and it was done. And our cities, our streets are in pristine condition now that, uh, the Water District is doing their work. They're far from that, uh, condition now, and I'm just wondering if, if what we're seeing now is the finished product, or is the city gonna put some kinda pressure on them to bring our streets back to what they looked like at the beginning? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yoderz. I believe, uh, Mr. Manager, the, there is a plan. Could you briefly articulate that, what that is?
I'm actually gonna have to defer that and bring that back.
Okay.
I'm gonna make sure that I know what I'm talking about before I make a statement.
All right, let's do that. Thank you very kindly. Next speaker, please.
That completes the speakers.
All right. Thank you all very much for coming up and exercising your constitutional right to speak. We really appreciate all the comments that were made and the input that we had. Um, council member updates and comments, uh, starting with, uh, Mr. August.
Okay, thank you. Am I allowed to comment on some information brought up by Mr. Yoder? And I'm, I'm confused as to why our city manager, uh, didn't, um, say anything about it, because I had, uh, talked to, um, Mr. Sullivan about that. I had received a question from one of our constituents, and I, he wrote back to me, informed me that, no, the work is not complete on that. They're doing hydrostatic tests, and once they're done, they will put them back into the, uh, finished condition, but only the areas that they, um, that they dug up. So, I have no idea what that's gonna look like after it's over, but no, they're not complete by any means, and they're, uh, they're just waiting to conduct some tests. Couple of other things. I, I wanna congratulate, uh, Sun City SCC. I think I might've already done that. I did go to that, uh, uh, event, and you handled that and did a great job in that, and I was very pleased to see other people from the community there, uh, their associations, and, uh, Menifee there as well. Today, I did get an opportunity to go to the, um, Lisa Sobek, the Interfaith Community, um, Service Council. Anytime I get an opportunity to be around Ms. Sobek, I do know that people are being helped and they're being cared for. Uh, when you're around her, it's kind of like, um, it's a very humbling experience, because you, you ask yourself the question, um, well, why can't I do more, or why can't a lot of other people do more? She's a, she is such a, a big person in this community for helping sick people, uh, helping the veterans and so on and so forth. Um, I would recommend any council member attend the meeting. I told her that I would continue, uh, to come if, if she wanted to, but I'd like to share that experience with other councilmen if they do come. Uh, last week, I did, thank you very much, um, Al and, uh, Lisa for inviting me this morning. I did have an opportunity with Mr., uh, Tom Furman to attend, uh, the Santa Rosa Academy yesterday and go through a tour. We went through all their classes. Uh, the teachers, um, took Tom and I through, and we, we had a chance to, uh, uh, enter the classrooms and talk to the teachers. I learned a lot about, um, tsunamis and divine wind kamikazes, um, um, the Spanish-American War and who won, and triangles, and I learned all that from Tom Furman. And...
(laughing)
Uh, I, I really didn't get a chance to talk to the kids. Uh, Tom was too busy telling me all, about all these things. But, uh, we had a great time. You should be very proud of the school. It's a, it's a charter school. Uh, it's a, what they do is the, the kids get around the tables and they do projects together with, uh, with the state-of-the-art type equipment stuff we didn't have when we were, uh, growing up. Everybody has a laptop. They're leased by the parents and so on and so. It's very high-level edu- education. Uh, I wa- I was very impressed, uh, with each classroom we went to, with the teachers and, uh, Laura Badiel, who she's the president of the school.
The director, yeah.
Director of the school. It was a fine time, and, uh, I really enjoyed it, and I'll, I'll wait for Tom's comments on that, so...
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, call on Mr. Furman next, if you don't mind, Mr. Furman.
I just wanna reiterate on some of Greg's comments. I was, I was actually, uh, talking to the students on most of those, because I just wonder if they're really getting their history lessons, because they're all sitting there with laptops and computers, but I know all that has, all that information on there, but, uh, Greg was kind of enamored on some of the questions I ask about history. I know that. Uh, also, on, uh, on Friday night, the Chamber of Commerce celebrated their thirty-sixth anniversary here in the city. Had a nice gala event over at the, uh, Menifee Lakes, and it was, Mr. Denver and I were there and had a wonderful evening, and it was a wonderful celebration. So, I wanna...
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Mr. Denver?
Um, I would like to ask that maybe our city manager, uh, review the presentation that, with the cost structure of this water, uh, this, uh, there was just discussed, the issue that was just discussed. I don't know if everybody understands, but, uh, Mr. Sullivan, Ron Sullivan, is an expert on this, uh, on this activity. He's involved with Sapa. He's, he's, um, he is our local connection to the people here, and to have a disagreement between his opinion and our opinion is very uncomfortable for me. And, um, if there's another way of doing this, and if Los Angeles does it another way, if that is true, then I think we need to have a report back before we move forward with this. And I, I'm not arguing which way it goes. I'm arguing that we need to take another look at this. That's my request.
Mr. Egerton?
Uh, just a quick, three comments. Uh, number one, piggybacking on, um, Councilman Denver's comments, I agree with him. Um, I think it really comes down to is, is, are these fees mandatory, or are they not? If they're mandatory, there's no need to have a discussion, and if we have to do it, we have to do it. If they're not mandatory, then the speakers such as Ron Sullivan and, uh, Kason, and these people who came before the council, then we ought to review what they're talking about, because the council has some decisions. So, either we're talking about facts or we're not, so that's where we have to go next. Um, I noticed on the issue of sludge, I, I, uh, have some familiarity with that sort of thing, and, uh, just point out that the council is, um, is, is moving ahead aggressively on that. Uh, we're, we're going to have a public forum on that. Um, again, without prejudging anything, I haven't seen anything yet that would lead to me to be concerned about the Menifee Valley. It looks like we're in very good shape, but let, let's let the evidence speak for itself. And, um, last, just to comment, uh, in reference to the press and the press enterprise, I believe it was Carl Love who wrote an article. I think Red, you'd made some comments in that article. And not to be, uh, sensitive, we're public officials, we're elected officials, we're big boys and girls, so we should be prepared to, you know, to take, get beat up every now and then. The only, my only concern about that article, it brought up old issues. It brought up old relationships. It talked about bickering on the council. Um, since that time, we've had an election. This was a current article. We've had an election. We have a new city attorney. We have a new city manager. We have a new mayor, and we have a new council. And our city attorney i- is functioning very well as far as this council is concerned. You just heard the testimony regarding our city manager, our interim city manager. We're really pleased with this guy. If, if anybody knows anything about organization, the thing that drives an organization with a leader is not the formal structure. Everybody knows what their job description is, whether they're a CEO of a company or a coach. Our mayor knows what his job description is, but we've watched his informal leadership. He's done an exemplary job. We're really pleased with our mayor. And this council, that was infamous ostensibly for bickering all the way to the East Coast, is, this is, this is maybe the best council I've ever worked with. This is kind of a Renaissance. Now, we don't need a pat on the back. We're, we're staff, we're council people. The staff is very... The staff is very happy about what, the way things are going right now. And you don't have to talk to an elected official, I would say, to the press. Talk to a staff member. Talk to anyone you want. They're really excited about the way we're going. And so it isn't a matter of giving plaudits to some chief staff person. It isn't a matter of commending the mayor or the council. It's a matter that the public has a right to know. If this council is bickering and not getting along, you let the public know they had a right to know. And I suspect they may have revealed that in this last election. Because they know that within that context of the behavior of a council, that does affect the decision-making process that affects the public. And right now, if you look at this council, this mayor, this city manager, this city attorney, and this staff, this is a renaissance. This is a transformation. And the public has a right to know that. I do hope you'll tell them. Thank you.
Thank you for that high praise, Mr. Edgerton. Eloquent as usual. I believe that brings, I have nothing to report as the mayor this evening during my comments. And so we'll move on to the agenda item number 10, the consent calendar. Do we have any changes on the consent? Or do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to remove 10.5 and then move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Very well. May I have a, we have a motion for 10.1 through 10.4, and we have a second by Mr. Furman. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you for the balance of the consent calendar. Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Edgerton.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Edgerton. And Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
That brings us to 10.5. Mr. Edgerton.
Yes, Councilman Denver and myself in the process of looking at the criteria that the mayor provided us for looking for a new city manager. And eventually, we came to the conclusion of, if anything broke, don't try to fix it. And we were really pleased with the way Rob is doing. The council agreed, and I can tell you so to staff. However, their serendipity, I guess you would call it, brought up another issue. In the process of looking at various people, the council came across Shawn, our former city manager of Temecula. And, I'm sorry?
Shawn Nelson.
No, I'm sorry, Shawn Nelson, the former city manager of Temecula. And the reputation that man has, of course, is frankly fabulous. He did a great job in Temecula. He's trained a lot of people who became city managers and work around the community. And so John and I kicked around the idea about hiring him as a consultant, not with any perks, not with any timeline, and just, and on a fixed consulting pay, not something on an hourly basis, to help the council. In fact, he can help the manager to the degree the manager wants to consult with him. He really isn't meant to be a consultant to the manager. He's a consultant to the city council. And Shawn has such a great reputation that the council kicked that around. We then asked for the advice of our city manager to see what he thought about it, and he was quite excited about it. So what we, after discussion, what we'd like to do is drop a contract for Shawn and bring that back before the public so you guys have a right to look at it. You can evaluate it. You can speak to it and see where we go from there. But Councilman Denver, perhaps you had some thoughts on it?
Just that this, this contract would be for a number of things. The one that comes to mind is the parks. We need some assistance. We have an issue here of a limited budget, and we're a very conservative council. We really haven't hired the number of people that most cities hire to do the jobs that need to be done. We've also had issues where certain things didn't get done. And so we can use Shawn to be able to accomplish some tasks that we set for him to get some things done that will help the city of Menifee. So he'll be having specific projects that we want to have done, as well as things that come up. He'd be reporting to us, not to the city manager. And I think that's my input.
With that, it was discussed in enclosed session with the city attorney and the city manager and the council. We were all in agreement with, we'd like to try this out. And so with that in mind, we would ask the city attorney with the support of the council to drop that contract and then bring it back to the next public meeting so that we can make our decision there and that the public will have an opportunity for their input as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edgerton. I want to just summarize to make sure, the recommendation of the city manager search committee is to put this, put an executive consulting contract on the next meeting agenda for the full council to consider in a public forum. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Do you need anything else from us? So we have two councilmembers that have asked for that to be, and we're all, we'll have all have a chance to vote on it next time. So do you need anything else from us? Any additional guidance on this matter?
No, only that I will be, I'll have access to the two committee members in case I need more details on the content of the agreement.
Absolutely. Okay. And in terms of the committee, gentlemen, thank you very much. You've done a fantastic job with this effort, and you worked well together. And thank you for bringing us back some very, very creative solutions and providing us the continuity of leadership and getting us moving ahead in the right way, where we want to go for the city. So thank you very much, and we will keep you in place for the time being.
Thank you, Mayor.
That brings us to, we have no public hearing issues this evening, so that brings us to discussion items. Agenda item 12.1, which is acceptance of the June 30th, 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Auditor's Letters. Mr. Johnson, I believe we have a staff report?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Terry Willoughby, our Director of Finance, has a report for you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and community. Tonight, I bring to you the fiscal year 2011 and '12 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Auditor Reports. We will have a brief presentation from Deborah Harper. She is a partner with our audit firm of Lance, Saul, and Lungheart. And then after she's finished, I will have a presentation on the results of that audit. Deborah?
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure being here.
Could I get someone to shut the door in the back, please? Thank you very much. Please continue. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. Thank you so much for letting me present the results of the audit to you. It's a pleasure. As Terry said, that I'm the partner with LSL. I was specifically the concurrent review partner for the city of Menifee when reviewing the financial statements. I just want to start off real quick and briefly, let you know about the audit process. It's a two-step process. When we come out initially, we always review your internal controls. We try to obtain an understanding of the processes within the city. And that helps us just to understand the controls, maybe provide some recommendations to enhance those controls. And then it also directs us in our planning process of what our expectations to see what the financial results should be at the end of the year. And then at the end of the year, we come back after all the financial post-closing entries have been made, and we do financial transaction test work, and we review the balances. And based on those audits, we give you the results in three different letters. The first letter is the most important one. It's going to be the opinion letter that goes with your financial statements. And I'm extremely happy to let you know that you have a clean, unqualified opinion. The second letter we provide you is a report on the internal controls. And this will give you an understanding if there's any significant deficiencies that we noticed and we want to make recommendations, or if there's any material weaknesses that we noted that we also make recommendations for. Extremely happy to tell you, there were no deficiencies whatsoever that we noted that we reported in your reported internal controls. The last letter is an actual, just a communication letter for the audit in general. It goes over any significant findings, if there's anything big in the audit pronouncements or new GASB pronouncements that need to be recorded, or changes to your financial statements that are up and coming, that will be noted to you in those reports. You'll see it in the other matters. We list out a few GASB pronouncements that are all coming up. And then it also identifies there was no unrecorded journal entries that we had to report on, and there was no difficulties, there was no disagreements at all with the audit. Everything went clear, and those were the three reports that give you the results of the audit.
Could you, thank you very much. Could you please clarify the acronym GASB for the benefit of the public?
Oh, sorry. Yes, Governmental Accounting Standards Board. So those are the actual accounting requirements from the government that tells you how a government should report in the financial statements.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Any questions from the council regarding the audit report? Well, thank you very much for your time and your presentation.
And now I'm going to just go over just a few of the highlights that are found within the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. And again, these would be pertinent to fiscal year 2011 and '12. Citywide highlights, these are the first statements that you find in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, or CAFR as we refer to it. These are all funds combined into one financial statement. Citywide, all funds revenues decreased 32% from fiscal year 2011. Decrease is primarily due to a one-time capital contribution in the prior year that was related to the transfer of park land from the county to the city of Menifee. This was $10 million. Also, a loss of city's share of vehicle license fee revenues from fiscal year 2011 to fiscal year 2012. $4.2 million was received in fiscal year 2011, and $3.9 million was projected to have been received but was not received in fiscal year 2012. Tax revenues, however, did increase on the citywide basis, this is through all funds, by 7%. Citywide expenses increased only 3% year-over-year. For the city's general fund, which is our largest fund and primarily, it's the major operating fund of the city, revenues decreased 17% or $4 million from the prior year. However, tax revenue did increase 6% from the prior year. Intergovernmental revenue, which is the primary component of the decrease, decreased 4.5 million. Again, this is loss of the vehicle license fee revenue from the prior year. And that's due to Senate Bill 89 and the governor's passage. Is there a question?
Go ahead. Council questions along the way, if you have, please. Mr. Edgerton?
The 4.5 million is reflecting the 17%?
It's part of that, yeah. The net was $4 million, and the 4.5, we had a 4.5 million decrease, but then other revenues increased. Okay. Expenditures actually decreased in the general fund from the prior year, 1% from the prior Expenditures of $21 million were $793,000 over revenues and transfers in, primarily due to expenditures that were budgeted in the prior year but expended in the current year. The difference in revenues, however, versus operating expenses is a surplus of $38,000, and I'll go into that in the next slide. Again, if the vehicle license fee had been received as anticipated, we would have had an additional $3.9 million in the general fund. Again, we had $21 million in expenditures, less $689,000. These were carryovers from fiscal year 2011, items that were budgeted in the prior year, but the budget was carried over and actually expended in fiscal year 2011-12, and capital expenditures of $143,000. This left net operating expenditures of $20.2 million, with revenues and transfers in of $20.2. So again, we basically broke even, even with the loss of the vehicle license fee revenue through careful management and direction from council. The budget to actual, you can see the revenues were $21.7, and actual was $20.2. Expenditures were $23.9 budgeted and $21 million actual. Actual revenues were lower than budgeted primarily due to lower-than-anticipated development fee projects revenue. This is engineering, planning, building permits. These are all deposit-based, so it's, we recognize the revenue as the work is completed on those permits and projects. Also, revenues associated with capital projects were completed on behalf of other agencies, such as the Trade Winds Project. We budgeted for the entire project in fiscal year 2011-12 when it was approved by council. However, the project wasn't completed until this fiscal year 2012-13, which is when we received the revenue. Actual expenditures were less than budgeted primarily due to capital projects or one-time expenditures, such as the general fund. They're budgeted at one time when they're approved, but they are not, oftentimes not completed within the fiscal year. Those budgets are primarily carried over into the next year for these large projects in capital. Also, we had some expenditures that were delayed in response to the loss of the vehicle license fee revenue. As you recall, we put a hold on staffing and slowed that down for quite a while. It was reflected in the budget to actual. This is a financial overview, year-over-year picture. You can see the prior year, fiscal year 09-10, we had a $1.3 million surplus. Fiscal year 10-11, a $3 million surplus. And again, many of these items were carried over and expended in fiscal year 11-12. So we had almost an $800,000 deficit. That's the gross without taking the capital and other items out. And the last column on your left shows what we would have had if we had received the vehicle license fee revenue as projected and expected. You can see, again, expenditures did decrease from the prior year. This slide shows the components of fund balance as they stood at June 30th, 2012, in their various buckets. We have a signed fund balance, which is assigned for certain purchases, purposes of $36,000. Part of that is assigned for fire safety revenues. We do receive some revenue from the AMR ambulance company, and we can only use these, those particular revenues on fire safety expenditures. So we set aside those monies. Also, we have a $15,000 assignment of fund balance. This is three times our deductible for the, for our insurance as a safety precaution. $6.1 million is committed by city council action for an emergency contingency reserve that was set in June of 2011. And then that left $3.2 million of general fund unassigned fund balance. Total of $9.3 million of fund balance. In summary, we do have, still seeing growth in tax revenues, growth in some activities, fees and fines, as we do undertake activities previously handled by the county, such as business licensing. We do continue to seek revenue enhancements to maintain our current general fund cost and revenue and cost structure and provide for future services for the residents of Menifee. And we continue to seek opportunities to amend fees as possible and appropriate to recoup the true cost of services. And that would only be done, of course, with council concurrence. Total general fund balance is very strong. It's 44% of general fund expenditures. GFOA recommendation is only, recommends a minimum of 15. So you can see, we compare very favorably. We had strong council action in June of 2012, this last fiscal, at the end of this last fiscal year as part of the budget process, to amend the fund balance policy to commit $6.3 million as an emergency contingency, which will leave the city very well suited to deal with potential problems. Council also took action in June of 2012 to establish a $250,000 reserve for a future city hall. Both of these actions are effective in fiscal year 2012-13. And as you know, efforts are still ongoing to restore VLF funding lost through the passage of Senate Bill 89. New legislation, Senate Bill 56, was introduced on January 7th by Senators Emerson and Roth to restore this funding. And efforts continue, and we work with our, with the lobbyist firm of Gonzales and Sons to, with the other new cities to help to restore that. That'll and Sons, to, with the other new cities to help to restore that. That'll take any questions at this time?
Any questions from the council? I have a couple, if you don't mind, because I wasn't, this is for June 30, 2012 ending.
Right.
So this is a closeout, and we're accepting the report. Could you, the $20 million in transportation revenue certificate of participation, what is that instrument secured against, and what is our interest rate on that, if there is one?
There isn't. It was secured by future allocations of Major A and gas tax. It was approved by council in October 2011, and also in, I believe, March, February of 2012, so it came back to council twice. I would have to go back and look at the actual interest rate, but it's right around a 4%.
Okay. And that, and that 20 million, has that been earmarked, I hate to use the term earmarked, but as dedicated funds for the Newport Road interchange?
That's correct. That was a designated project.
All right. And the, I see that we began the new year with a 29% contingency reserve, and that, that 3.2 million in unassigned fund balance, did the, did the council, when we began this fiscal year, did they leave that unassigned, or was it budgeted, was it operationalized, or was it swept into the reserve?
It was not.
Or did we carry the, we carried it over just as it was?
We carried it over as it was. We adopted a balanced budget, so we did not foresee using any of that reserve when we adopted the fiscal year 12, 13 budget.
Okay, all right. The, I have one, oh, two more questions.
Sure.
Why is there a negative 11 point, on page six of the report, why is there a negative 11.5 million in the city's unrestricted net assets column?
Is that on the?
On page six of the CAFR.
On the statement of net assets?
Yes.
That's, the statement of net assets is done on an accrual basis. It's different than the other statements that are cash. So it's, if you can see on the next statement, two pages over, there's a reconciliation between the fund balance and that statement.
Okay, that answers that. Thank you very much. And the final question I have, on page, if you could fix this for the future, I would appreciate it, because I, when, when the housing element came before the council last year, this similar data was presented in the housing element, and I came and spoke at it, spoke to it from the dais, or from the podium there. And if, on page 75 of the CAFR, the city of Menifee principal employers sheet, if someone could do some research on that, because the Mount San Jacinto College District is listed as the number one, number one employer in the city with 1,043 employees, and, and that includes the San Jacinto campus, the Pass area campus, the Menifee campus is right around 470, 474.
Sure.
And, and the Menifee Union School District here is listed as having 200 employees, but they actually have, as of the period ending 31 January, 1,083 employees. So if we could scrub that a little bit for the future.
Actually, this year, we changed it a little bit from the prior year. We did, we worked with the chamber on getting, putting that list together. However, in future years, we should be able to get that directly from our business license system, so we'll have more accurate data.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other questions? All right. Do we need a motion to accept the report? May I, may I have a second? Do we need a roll call or is it a voice vote?
Voice vote's fine on that.
Okay. Any objections? The, the report is accepted. All right. Onto agenda, I, thank you very much, staff, for that presentation. 12.2, direction to staff regarding acceptance of grant funding for the One Water, One, One Water, One Watershed Grant. Mr. Johnson, staff report?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a brief oral update. Staff has been working diligently with the city attorney to fully understand the ramifications of accepting this grant through SAPA, which is the San Antonio Watershed Protection Authority. We're talking about the Line A flood control project. It's four different segments. There's three within the city limits. The first that we applied for was a 12.6 million dollar project, where we were hoping to get a million dollars back, pardon me, from, from SAPA. We applied through a process, and we met yesterday with the principals of that process, and if we agree to move forward, staff will bring that back on the 19th of February for council action.
Okay. Just to be clear, are you asking for us to give direction tonight, or are you just asking to bring it back?
I'm, I'm recommending that as soon as staff identifies if it's not only legally and fiscally possible for us to do the project, we will bring it back. If it's not, you won't see it.
Okay. I, Mr. Denver?
There was a time issue on that grant. Do we have enough time for you to take that amount of time?
SAPA board met this morning. We met with one of its representatives yesterday to go over our project. There are quite a few issues with our project. SAPA met this morning and agreed to give us 14 days to make sure we've done our full due diligence. However, they're already ready to recommend refunding that dollar amount to someone else. So they're giving us one final opportunity, and if we don't, we'll move on. However, there's another round of funding coming up, which is worth $70 million, and we feel that's more appropriate to apply for.
Is, is one accepted from, do you, you cannot apply for the second if you apply for the first?
We've applied for the first and the second, and then the third round comes. So it's a continual application process, funding or not funded.
If we wait until the next meeting, or when the next time, does it go over the 14 days?
Between now and the next council meeting? No.
How many days does that give us left of the 14?
It's 14 from now to the next council meeting. So you'd be approving it or not approving it, and then that night or the next day, we would be allowed, we would be sharing that with SAPA.
There is enough time, if we approve it that night, for you to get it within that 14-day period?
Yes, sir. They've agreed that that's the way that we will handle the situation.
Thank you. Any other comments from council on this item? Do you have enough, do you have enough direction from us on that, then?
Yes, I believe I do.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Manager. We are, this comes to city attorney reports.
Yes. I just wanted to give you an update that in, at the February 19th meeting, we'll be presenting a review of all of the various ordinances that have been submitted and considered for amendment by the city that have been sort of out there. We've gathered them together, and will at least tell you what has been done and where things are, and get then further direction as to how you want us to proceed. So that will be coming forward. And beyond that, we did have authority from the council at the last meeting to send a letter to the FPPC to clarify some issues with regard to Mr. Furman. That letter is just in the process of being finalized. It should go out in the next few days. So just to give you that report. And other than that, everything is poking along.
Any questions from council of the attorney? Thank you, Ms. Biggs. Mr. Johnson, city manager report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a brief report tonight. We are happy to, and elated, actually. Our Menifee Matters Newsletter's final draft is headed to print on Thursday. It will be actually hitting households, 27,000 of them within Menifee, by the end of next week. This is just a little bit of a screenshot to what it looks like. It's chock full, 16 pages full of information throughout the city, and regarding basically every one of our departments, plus the recreation activities we have. We're very excited. Our Economic Development Department, Jeff Weinman and Brian did a phenomenal job in getting this together and ready to print. We did receive a letter, actually directed to the mayor, as of January 17th, from the Rancho La Vida Homeowners Association, and I just wanted to give an update to council that we had actually shared this issue at council on January 2nd, and it's been in our engineering department, making sure that we create, this is on McCall, south of Han Christiansen Middle School, that, that piece of walkway there, that sidewalk, needs to be installed. And we already have it through our Public Works Department has already specked it out, and we're working on how to get that completed in the next few weeks. Jonathan Smith, I'm going to have him contact the homeowners association and give them that update. Somehow, we must have missed information there with them, but we need them to know that we're on that, and we're working to complete that. Finally, I was able to attend the City Managers League meeting last week. I just want to make sure that I report out on that. It was informative. It was all city managers in California. There were 280-some-odd city managers, plus some county areas, so there was about 315 folks there, and very packed, hard to get a seat, had to get there early, and you had to stay late. But a number of areas regarding performance and communication, and what the league focuses for the next year was discussed. And, you know, I was able to meet with several city managers in the region and share project and program ideas with them and management techniques. It was, it was very, very good time. I just want to thank the council and appreciate the opportunity to attend the seminar, and let you know that I've received valuable information to assist me in the future. And that's the end of my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any questions of the city manager? Okay. Future agenda requests from council. Do we have any future agenda requests this evening, other than the one previously regarding the NPDS deposit, well, deposit fee? I can't think of anything to call it else, but, so are there any other requested agenda items? Very well, we stand adjourned.